I think we're okay.
I understand that, right. We're basically paying for their men- then to use their manpower.
Correct.
Along with assistance from either yourself or someone.
Uh-uh.
In the city. So, we would be involved, both primarily we're utilizing their manpower, then we maintain it from that point going forward. But our map instead of being 2012 will be probably 2021, uh, 2020 or 2021.
2024.
Yes.
And we can.
So it brings us eight, eight years forward and a more usable system.
Correct.
I make the motion that we accept EMS professional services for mapping and the smoke test.
McCormick has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Council on Vandal was second and all those in favor. The motion carries.
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Excellent agenda. We have a gentleman by the name of William Walworth. He wants to do a short presentation on radar science presentation.
Probably the most visual person that's been here before, right? First of all, thank you all for having me here. Sam and I have been in touch for quite some time and following you at the point because your mayor and council is asking me to come meet with you. So thank you. Last thing I just met with the mayor of Tulip Falls in their council, talked about school zones and with the police chief and how our signs could be used. So again, thank you for your interest in our project and our company. I brought two of my three signs with me. The top one is my TC 400, which is a rechargeable, portable, battery-operated sign. And my sign on the bottom is my TC 600, which both comes AC power and solar power. Thinking of catalog on our just done line. The public works and police departments prefer to work more with the TC 400 because of its ease of use and being able to deploy this sign. And one person can deploy the sign and have fully operational in under two minutes. I'm mayor. I know you get those calls, any emails from this council, public works and the chief. I got all the right people standing in front of me. I know you get those calls and those emails about the speeds and the hot spots and is it true? Are people really going, for example, 65 and 25 in that neighborhood? Well, here's your visual deterrent. Here's a way to do those traffic studies and find out to tell Mr. Smith, the HOA president or that community that yes, you are correct. The situation is worse than we thought, or it's not exactly what they're telling you. Every year we do the chief of police show over in Athens, Georgia. And the chief shared with me one something a year ago. It sounds so good to steal that one from me. And it was funny how law enforcement has to take a 40-hour class in speeding the radar. But the general public has calibrated eyeballs and they can determine and believe about how fast the cars go. So with this sign here, the TC 400, one officer can lock this to the pole, lock it to the pole, put it inside of the sign, close it, lock it, have it fully powered up in under two minutes. The radar, which is located here behind this bash plate and behind this protective cover here in the front, which is called a Lexan cover, it can pick up calls in a range of up to 1,200 feet away under perfect conditions. But rarely are those conditions perfect because there is us sending, descending, there's turns, trees, buildings in the way. That all of our signs are counting cars, capturing speeds, the number of violators time of day. You can retrieve that data from the, from the sign and provide up to, and do up to 35 different charts and graphs. So mayor, if you sent the chief out and put a sign up in an area that's a hotspot, maybe there's some accidents happen, he can provide those charts and graphs to you and show you the effectiveness these signs are having. We live in a digital age and people are coming in more to place it. We can have their cell phones, just not paying attention. But if you're like me and you actually breeze through the land of the day to come up here with no traffic, which is the effects of the, uh, the virus outbreak, if people are trying to work, you can have enjoy the drive up here and you can mentally goes off and not realize that you're doing 55 or 65 or a 35 or even a 45 very easily. Okay? If you'll notice that on this sign, the TC 400, it is only carved out to show vehicle speeds. My sign on the bottom has a full matrix display, so it can act as a partial message board. It said things like slow down, too fast, curve ahead. We can program it, have a fine and a dollar amount that let the public know that they could be fined, you know, for being speeding through that speed target. But these are visual deterrents. They are not, they do not pick people.
Battery-operated or solar?
On the top one? Battery-operated, no.
Really? What, Mr. James?
Yes. So your question to me probably is how long do these batteries last? The sign comes with two batteries, but for this demo, I've only got one in there. Each battery lasts between five to seven days. Five on the days on the lower end per battery in a high-volume, high-traffic area. I have police chiefs and public works that are telling me I'm wrong about seven days. Then they're getting between two batteries, sometimes three and a half to four weeks in between the two batteries. But what I don't know is that going in a neighborhood of 50 homes? Is it 500 homes? Is it? I, that I don't know. But they're consistently telling me I'm wrong about seven days inside neighborhoods and HOAs.
The top one, I'm familiar with. We used those signs before and they usually about in a neighborhood of about 500 homes and they last about four or five days.
Okay.
And we change them out.
There you go.
It's good, but you got traffic coming through there constantly.
Yes, and you have full control to tell the sign what you want it to do and how you want it to do it. Meaning, you tell the sign the settings, what is the speed limit I'm placing it? What do I want the minimum speed display to be? So if the speed limit is 35, I don't need to set it at 5 miles an hour. Maybe you have it come on at 30 and a 35. The maximum speed display on these signs is 99, but we don't want to set it at that. So someone will race it and try to get high score. So I can set it to be whatever I want the maximum speed to be. And you'll notice, I had it closed when I did that. You'll show two dashes where I can have the sign go off. So if someone wants to race it and let's say it's in a 45 and he, and you tell the sign, I want that display to go off at 60 because I don't want him to pick it up at 30 miles an hour and hits grandma. We see the rest of that story on Channel 2 Action News divine. Oh, it wasn't there or something down the road. So it is a visual deterrent. So you have full control over that. So if the mayor were to ask you, hey, six months ago, you put that out on that road, that turn, that neighborhood, did we ever get the data from it? My sign is, all of my signs are storing 365 days worth of data. So if you've got X number of signs in a few years, as long as you knew which sign by the serial number and the date that that sign was out there, the data on the sign is there for 365 days. And just because you retrieved that data from the sign doesn't mean that it's deleted. It's still there. On the 366 day, it begins to brighten over each individual day.
First in, first out.
Yeah. Yes, there you go. Great example. My sign on the bottom is the TC 600, but I want to define portability. My TC 400 is one person, two minutes delays. My TC 600, because of its size and the fact that you have, if you go to the solar sign, you've got to have a ladder to get up and install the rack for the solar panel. So it becomes more of a 10 to 15-minute install. But if public works is doing it and they have a lift truck or bucket truck, they're telling me consistently that they're doing, they can move that sign, have it locked or hold it, powered up and fully operational in, in around six to eight minutes. Okay? AC-powered sign, you're not going to move it because you've got to get an electrician out there and connect to it. On this particular sign, this is a product of radar signs called Hyper Alert. These are primarily used in school zones and they add an additional 1,000 feet of visibility for school zones. However, the traditional 12-inch large beacon heads that are in our catalog, you will find those as well. Have, have y'all thought about school zones?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have, we have an issue with speeders on Broad Street in the school zone. One of the calls, one of the numerous calls that we get, you know, is people speeding on Broad Street in the school zone.
That's your hotspot.
The interesting thing about the sign is that we could, we could find out if the sign is determining speeding. And from that point, we can say, okay, it's not working. We can put speed bumps in. We can, we can make decisions based on the data we collect.
That's exactly right. You get the same news stations that we get via Channel 2 Action News and those. I don't know if you remember the story, but back in November of 2018, at Lindley Middle School in Cobb County, which is about one and a half miles from my house to where I live now, a crossing guard by the name of Miss Edna Huma, who's a 35-year-old woman, was hit and killed. And it was a very tragic scene that she was not rushed to the hospital in the night. She was killed on that night. We reached out to the Cobb DOT, some bureaucracy and some hoops to jump through there because I don't really fully know that I really understood how law enforcement schedules work, what school are they going to be at, which one today, which other this week. But it had to do with some scheduling issues and where would Lindley Middle School fall with this. But we gave two of these signs to Lindley Middle School in the name of Miss, in honor of Miss Edna Huma. Met the family that day. We found out more about the incident. My point is, is before her death and for a point after her death, Cobb DOT had done their own traffic studies. And I don't know if they used the term inconclusive or indeterminate. But basically, we can't figure out if it was a real issue, but it took someone getting killed. I went out there and worked with a principal who I don't think is there anymore. And we have not heard from them. They let us know the impact these have had. And when we looked at the data, we saw days where there was close to an 80% calling effect. That's a huge number. I would have thought that if they were totally maybe 15, 20, 30, 35% or better. We saw close to an 80% calling effect out there. Now, these hyper alerts here, what a lot of schools are doing is it's important to get their attention and get them to slow down. And maybe we do want to know what kind of speeds they're doing visually with our sign. But if we can just get them to slow down through that school zone and alert them, how you're coming into the school zone and slow down, that's, that's all we're trying to do. So what a lot, what schools are doing is they're programming this for the two LED beacons, the hyper alerts, to flash during school hours, or school hours when the buses are running or the parents are running in the afternoon. And then they have the sign just flash slow down during those two hours. I think that's a lot more effective than showing, you know, their speed limit during that time. But you have the ability to set that sign up in the settings to do whatever you want. So if, once the school session is in, or nights, weekends, you have full control to tell the sign what you want it to do. So if there is a festival town, something going on that is bringing people down that road, whether it's summer, nights, weekends, or when school's in session, you can, by the way, chief, what is the speed limit in that area? You got?
Third, oh, school, in school zone, 25.
25?
Yes.
So you can tell the sign that at whatever speed limit, maybe at 30, that you want these LED beacons to come on 24/7 to alert people. Maybe two or three in the morning, there comes, and I, I don't know that route. I don't know the businesses that are on there, but maybe it's Friday at 6, 7 o'clock and people are coming in and out and someone's doing X number of miles an hour. In the settings, you can say, I don't want those LED beacons just going off all the time like when the school buses are running. But when they hit a certain speed over, I want that to alert them that you're going over that speed. So you have full control over these. Price-wise, my signs start at $2,695 for my AC-powered sign. My, uh, my TC 400, which is my rechargeable battery-operated sign, is $2,895. My solar sign, which is still the TC 600, did you get AC or solar? Is $3,595. And we do price breaks on two or more signs. Couple of customers I've got up here just in this general area. I mentioned the city of Auburn. Your police department has our signs. Saw those to the old chief. I don't, I don't know the new chief.
Elder.
What was it? Yes. I saw it right before a few months and then he retired. Accomi County, County of Jackson, the Jackson Sheriff's Office, City of Auburn. I can go through pretty much name almost, I would say 80, maybe 75, 80% of the Atlanta metro area. The city of Hayfield just got 10 of the solar signs, brand-new customer, last month. So what questions about our signs can I answer for you?
I have one. Do they also provide a camera? If you get a camera?
You can't, none of our signs have cameras. On the sign on the bottom, the TC 600, and I have a larger sign that is just way too big for my lower back to haul around with me. You can have what's called a relay switch in that sign. And a relay switch is what a camera needs for their camera system to communicate with ours. So if you said, hey, look, what'd you say the speed limit was?
25.
25. I want that camera to trigger and take a picture of anybody and say five, six, 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, then that's what you need to communicate with ours. But we do not do cameras.
And one you're talking about, would it be a permanent, the one you just spoke about with the relay? Or would it be that?
It's just an internal switch with a plug that comes out for the camera company to connect to. I don't know the camera and how their mounting system works, but I would probably think that would take quite a bit of setup time from a moving standpoint, if you know what I mean. That's just not the industry. So I don't know what we would be involved with that.
Those are both portable, correct?
They are. Again, the top one, battery-operated, only one person in two minutes. My one on the bottom, that if you get it solar, one person can do it. But it takes 10 to 15 minutes of a ladder, a lift truck, bucket truck, six to eight minutes. Now, on the bottom one, you can add cellular connectivity. So if somebody wants to be funny, they want to take your time and, to give them that. But I think you have something that belongs to the city. It's on your property. And it happens to be out in the trunk of their car or out in the back of the shed. You can plug your laptop and pin it and say, look, our cell count is showing minutes while you're on your property. But we can count on one hand, using all, all five fingers, in the last 16 years, the number of signs that have been stolen from us. It's pretty good.
Now, these are both portable. Do you have a permanent?
The AC-powered sign, it's going to be the same sign on the bottom, just AC-powered. It's going to connect into your power lines.
What does that one cost?
$2,695. AC power is always going to be less expensive, but you're not going to move it.
I was just thinking for a school zone, if it becomes permanent, someone had mentioned that this was going to be required at some point.
Well, the Florida Department of Transportation has instituted that all their school zones incoming in both directions by July 2022 must have a radar sign with a 12-inch school zone beacon head attached to it. With, with a four-inch, you have some school zone signs right around the corner that's four foot tall that'll attach to those kind of poles. And we think there's going to be states just following in right behind it. And there's already talk in many other states, but Florida's the only one of the states that I cover. And I cover as far as Washington or Oregon that have instituted that this must be in place.
I like the portability, but I just really like the idea of having a permanent in the school zone.
They should be.
Takes a lot of the argument out of it, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, it does.
Mr. Moore, any other questions?
Sure.
How's the data stored? And what format do they have? How do they get the data?
Great. Actually, let me show you. So my sign is emitting its own wireless frequency. And what I'm going, let me jump off the demo mode here. So the way that you connect my sign is it has a frequency of 300 feet under perfect conditions. Rarely are conditions perfect because there is us sending, descending, there's turns, building, trees that are blocking the signal. All I'm doing is on my device, I go into my Wi-Fi settings and I'm looking for signal. It says RS for radar sign, excuse me, dash and then six numbers. I'm going to grab that Wi-Fi signal. I'm going to, it's password protected. So chief, if you've got X number of these in the years to come, maybe bad, and you want to change the passwords, you have the ability to do it. I open up my browser and I will not publicly give out the domain number. There's the number that you type in that all the signs are similar. And the settings. Boy, you are kidding me. So you're. The settings will appear in your browser. So there's no software. There's no app. Okay? There's a big green button there that says get radar data. When I hit that button, it's going to ask me the start date, March 1st. How many days of data did the mayor request? I went it through today, the 17th. When you pull that data from the sign, and it only takes a few seconds, it's going to create it. And a common deleted CSV spreadsheet is basically the most stripped-down version of the spreadsheet. The software that you will download from our portal is used to create up to 35 different charts and graphs. You will, chief, you drop that data file into our software and you can create up to monthly, weekly, daily. You can trim it down to a quarterly hour report. I personally think that 95% or more people look at it in 30-minute increments. But it's generally the traffic engineers that want to break it down into 15-minute increments and look at it. And then he can provide that information to you and say, here's the effectiveness that we are having. You can also, one thing I always encourage new customers to do, if you really want to immediately see the effectiveness of our sign, you can put them all in stealth mode. So if you, I think you agree with me that if you didn't see our sign as a visual deterrent, you didn't see an officer out there or the old speedy trailers, turn the display off, let it collect data, and people aren't going to notice it. They're going to go about their normal speeds. Then you can turn it on for a week to maybe.
Real numbers.
Yeah, you're getting real data because you're, you're going to put the sign out and now you're going to cast, you are going to get emails, thank you. This is better than spice brand. And trust me, it's coming because you're going to say, we have, we got them. But if you really want to see effectiveness, I always tell people, turn it off for three or four days and then turn it off for three or four days and look at that data and you'll see those numbers come straight down. And it's, we just live in a digital world. And I too have become complacent. I remember I lived down in Florida. My wife and I owned a business down there. And I went flying through the school zone, through school hours, and the policeman pulled me over and was like, man, did you know you're going through the school zone? I was like, no. And it was a pretty happy ticket back in the day before I discovered radar sign when I moved back here in Atlanta. So.
Mr. Moore, do you, do you have any real world data that we could look at to prove effectiveness?
I don't have any with me right now, but I know.
I could do that as well.
Yeah, I actually put a sign out a few years ago, but I turned the display off on that one. If I were to get you some more real-time data, I would need to find a place and work with the Cobb DOT to get approval to put a sign out. But there's a bit of a process for that one.
Can we, is it possible we can like use one for like temporarily, just for like a, just to see?
That's, that's very possible to do. Yeah, very possible to do.
Consider it maybe not a school zone, you know, for a week or whatever.
Very possible. Yeah. We have so many demo signs and I was especially in Florida last week with city council meetings lined up Monday through Thursday, and that trip has been canceled due to virus. So, but yeah, we may have some availability to do there quite myself.
So the white sign, based on what I've seen, the white sign will typically mount under the posted speed limit sign.
These signs will mount to any type of existing pole or fence. Square post, U-channel, or round pole. The only time it requires any additional hardware is for round poles. The signs will be a little bit more effective, actually quite a bit more effective on a round pole because when you're putting it on a square post or a U-channel that's already concrete in the ground, that sign will generally be aiming down the side of the road. Where I put it on a round pole, it gives you that three or five degrees to aim it more down the road and it's affecting. Sometimes people call us and say, well, you told me 1,200 feet, but I'm 100, 150 feet away. And it's because that sign and that radar is aiming down the side of the road and that round pole just gives you that ability to turn a few degrees and you get that extra 1200 feet. Now, we sell these signs as-is to go on existing poles. As you go through my catalog, we sell complete school zone systems. We sell something called safety in a box where it comes with a 12-foot round pole. Pelco breakaway base cap with a concrete form kit. So in case a car loses control, hits that pole, the base cap is designed to shatter the brake, allow the pole to fall. We can fix the sign. We can replace the solar panel, but we can't replace the light. And allowing that Pelco pole to fall does less damage to the car, does less damage to your car. We are based out of Marietta, been in Alpha Rota. So if there's any servicing issues with the sign, we are right up the road. Nothing's going to be shipped overseas and everything is assembled and built in our Marietta location.
Probably says in your stuff, in your pamphlets, but what kind of warranty?
Two-year on everything.
So probably recommended to get a couple of extra batteries if you went with the top one.
A lot of times public works and police will do that because they obviously want to deploy the sign and have it out as long as possible. If a, if a battery for the smaller sign, the TC 400, is close to, you know, dead as possible as recharge, typically five, maybe six hours for a full recharge. But they'll typically go ahead and just keep extra batteries on the charger. So when they move it from plane A to point B, they can just put two fresh batteries in and then keep it out and fill that up.
If they have two batteries.
You can always order more from us.
Anyone have any questions?
I got, I got one question.
Sure.
How much are the batteries?
For the, for the battery car sign, each battery is $300.
How long is the warranty on the battery?
Typically between four to five years.
A lithium or what?
Uh, on that particular battery, we'll see. Now, lithium, we try to stay away from it. On the 400. Then also on the next one. Nickel metal hydride on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for having us.
Appreciate it.
And I'll turn that off. So quit flashing your light shed.
Next on the agenda, I wanted to amend that the policies and procedures are some things in light of what has been coming down the pipe from, all the way from Washington DC down to state of Georgia. So I was going to present some policies and procedures that I think need to be updated. One in particular, it's been about 10 years, I guess, since we've had an update on our pandemic. So the policy that was put together, as I understand it, primarily came right out of GMA or?
Were your pandemic guidelines came from a neighborhood?
So is this something that we'd be required to read? I don't think the public has this pandemic.
I agree, and they are not required to use it. Summarize it or read it.
Okay. It basically says that it would give me as the mayor, the ability that if need be to send people home, as I, as I understand it and read it, if they're showing signs or request them not to come to work. If we need to basically take the office from a full staff to essential staff only. And non-essential, I would have the, the authority to basically decide what is essential and non-essential staffing. So at this point, everyone around us is slowing down on who's working and who's not, I guess. But we need to limit the public coming into city hall as much as possible. So we put signs up requesting that payments be made in a, out in a box outside and, you know. So we're still going to keep our doors open and continue to go day to day on the operation. day on the operation, but it gives the mayor some authority as to, um, what would, what would happen depending on how much this epidemic or pandemic would, would continue. The order of succession, uh, during the, this trying times, it says, uh, during the declarat, the declared state of emergency by the city, uh, the chain of command would maintain as follow. I would still be the mayor, um, in, in the event that I would be sick, it would fall to the vice mayor, and the council would still continue in their capacity, along with the department heads, uh, then you have your full-time employees under that, and then part-time or voluntary, um, employees, which really is no such thing as a voluntary employee. Yes, any question?
If you have to send these people home, will they get paid for the time they're missing?
Depending on how bad it gets, um, as I understand it, most of them are, they can use personal time. Um, if it gets really bad, I, I guess that would be a, a call that I would have to make. It's not due to their negligence, it's not due to their fault.
And they still have, you know, they still have their bills, that's not changing, so, yeah, I, I'm just wondering, I'm worried about everybody that way.
Um, I was going to ask you, is there anything that you've heard at this point, um, as far as making employees take time off, or anything?
The only thing I've heard is various employers, employer, vary for the size of the employer, um, that it's, it really has more to do with safety and, um, making sure that folks aren't exposed, but in terms of payments and unemployment and all that type of stuff, that's, that kind of thing's still being locked out.
If they're showing signs, though, that would be a, you're off, you have to step on.
Yeah, and, and I-